Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call this meeting to order. I am going to ask our new deputy city manager Heather if she would come up and lead us in the pledge of allegiance tonight. Thank you, Heather. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Littler?
Here.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Here.
Councilmember Judge?
Here.
Mayor Protem Rhodes?
Here.
Mayor Thomas?
Are there any items for a gender review?
No, Mr. Mayor, there are not.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, a move that all resolutions and ordinances presented tonight be read in title only and all further reading be waived.
Second?
The motion passes unanimously.
If any member of the city council may have a conflict of interest or any reason why that member must abstain from consideration of any manner on this agenda, he or she should declare so at this time. Okay, we're good.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, first on the agenda is item two, public statements on appointments, special presentations, and informational reports. Speakers will be called on in the order in which their card was submitted to speak for this public statement, item two, for a period of no more than three minutes each. For the record, persons addressing the city council are requested to state their name and community of residence, and, Mr. Mayor, we have no speakers for this item. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, next on the agenda is item 3A1, appointment of Special Event Support Review Committee members and senior management analysts. Heidi D'Nardo is here to present this item.
Good evening, Mayor Thomas, members of the city council. In 2014, the city council established the Special Event Support Review Committee to assess applications for city support in the form of cash sponsorships and make funding recommendations to the city council. While the council chose not to require specific scoring criteria, they provided the committee with key guidelines to consider: to give preference to events that utilize proceeds locally within Simi Valley, and to prioritize funding for events offering greater community and public benefits over those with lesser community and public benefits. Each year, multiple grant requests are submitted with only $25,000 available, making it essential to allocate these funds to events that deliver meaningful, lasting benefits. The committee plays a vital role in evaluating applications and prioritizing those that embody the values of reinvesting in the community and enhancing quality of life for residents. The committee includes one representative from each of the city's four neighborhood councils and one from the Council on Aging. Those bodies have each nominated individuals for this committee, and it is recommended that the city council appoint the following nominated committee members. For those of you who are here in attendance this evening, please come up when I call your name. Representing Neighborhood Council Number One, Laura Hurd. Representing Neighborhood Council Number Two, Michael Turpak. Representing Neighborhood Council Number Three, David Critzer. And it's also Mr. Critzer's birthday today, just mentioning. And representing Neighborhood Council Number Four, Stephanie Bunker. And finally, although she could not make it here this evening, Janet Plant will be representing the Council on Aging.
Well, I certainly would love to move appointment of the five. There's no discussion.
The motion passes unanimously.
It's not going to be an easy task, just sharing, so appreciate your efforts. And just for those that don't know, Michael Turpak is our postmaster here.[733.76][733.76](laughter)
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, first or next on the agenda is item four, public statements. Since there are no public hearings under Agenda Item Five this evening, Agenda Items Four and Six are combined, and the council will hear all public statements under this Agenda Item Four. Agenda Item Number Four and Agenda Item Number Six are the times allotted for public statements on all items other than public hearings, appointments, and informational reports. Speakers will be called on in the order in which their card was submitted to speak for this public statement item for a period of no more than three minutes each. Persons addressing the city council are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Mr. Mayor, unless you have any comments, we will begin the public statements.
Please proceed.
Good evening, Mayor Fred and council members. I'm Daniela Palma. I'm going to be the translator for Mrs. Margarita, referring to the program Safety Around Water from the YMCA. She's going to share her experience.
Hola, ¿qué tal? Buenas tardes.
Good evening.
Mi nombre es Margarita.
My name is Margarita.
Soy madre de tres hijos, Julián, Daniel, Andrea.
I'm a mother of three child, Julián, Daniel, and Andrea.
Mis hijos tuvieron la increíble experiencia de participar en las clases de natación.
My kids had the wonderful experience of participating in the program Safety Around Water.
Ellos tuvieron la oportunidad porque por medio de una amiga yo me enteré de estas clases. Mis niños anteriormente habían tenido... Uno de mis hijos tenía que estar más enfocado en deportes, pero lamentablemente era muy caros. So, este, me dieron la oportunidad para que mis hijos pudieran tomar estas clases sin tener ningún costo.
I had the opportunity to find out about this problem from a friend. One of my kids needed to have really active, like, active activities for sports and keep active because he had a, like, a problem. So, every sport is really expensive in here, so they gave me the opportunity to be having these swim lessons. It is an activity for free.
Ellos tenían que tener más actividades físicas y ellos estaban muy felices de participar en estas clases. Eh, fue realmente, ha sido una increíble experiencia. Mis niños tuvieron la oportunidad de tener la clase. Terminó la clase, después les dieron otra segunda oportunidad porque no se completó, al parecer, las personas que podían participar. So, este, en esta última vez que apliqué yo para que mis hijos tuvieran la oportunidad de participar en estas clases, me mandaron un email que mis niños ya no podían participar en estas clases porque ya estaba el espacio lleno. So, eh, después me mandaron un email porque yo llamé para pedir si podía haber un espacio para ellos, otro lugar, otro día. No me importaba la hora y no me importaba que fuera otro día. Yo podía hacer el espacio para llevarlos. Me llamaron y me dijeron que podían dar un espacio para mis hijos. Yo estoy muy agradecida porque mis hijos estaban tristes por no tener ya la clase. So, ya iban a tener la clase nuevamente y ellos estaban muy felices por eso.
So, I had the opportunity to do it for the first time, and then when I tried to do it again, I couldn't do it because the spots were really full. But thankfully, they gave us another opportunity, and my kids were really, really happy and excited about it because they really enjoy it. And of course, because it was free, so the opportunity was perfect for us.
Si, mis niños en estas clases tuvieron, tienen ahora más confianza. Lo me gusta porque pues han aprendido de la clase, han aprendido para, pues algo que les va a servir a ellos para, en una ocasión que sea necesario, que ellos sepan nadar. Eh, y aparte de que van, se desestresan, y es muy, muy divertido. Para ellos les encanta la clase. Estoy muy, muy agradecida porque les han dado esta oportunidad.
I'm very thankful for this because my kids from this learned to be more confident as a person. They were being safe in the water, and it's a skill that is going to help them for the future in what, in any of the moment. They were more happy about it, they were more active, for sure. So, we are very thankful that we could have bring this program to families so their kids can be enjoying more in being safety around the water.
Muchas gracias, y nada más para terminar. A las personas que están involucradas en dar la oportunidad de estos programas, yo les, personalmente les agradezco mucho porque fue un programa muy increíble y que les ha dejado algo muy, muy bueno a mis hijos. So, muchísimas gracias, eh, y es todo de mi parte. Gracias.
Thank you so much. I'm very thankful for all the people who had to give this opportunity to these families because you really helped for all of us. Thank you so much.
Good evening, city council. I hope your elections go well. You're a great group. My name is Daniel Porter from Simi Valley. I'm following up on the deed issue recorded on 19,000 parcels. The realtors, loan agents, and other professionals I've spoke with seem to agree the deed by the BGCH Attorney Group at Fenimore Law was a significant overreach. I invited the attorney to come, apologized, and promised to clean it up. Simi Valley is a pretty forgiving group when someone promises to clean up their mess. Research to date seems to indicate the attorney at Fenimore Law helped their client to commit fraudulent overreach by recording exaggerated rights on 19,000 parcels in Simi Valley Moore Park and Thousand Oaks. What started out as a request in Bertha Alford's will that was described by Los Angeles probate rights as rights of way for roads and water pipes has been expanded into any system for the collection, conduction, and distribution of the waters of Rancho Simi. A well has a collection system at the bottom, so what impact does this have on 595 wells in Simi Valley? Conducting and distribution refers to pumping, filtering, and water delivery to businesses and homes. The geographic area was expanded to include 19,000 parcels from the west side of Moore Park to Tappo Canyon Road in Simi Valley, Happy Camp up in the hills by Fillmore down to, into Thousand Oaks. I've been unable to get a description or map of the rights she actually had. I checked several places, including the county recorder, attorneys, and other sources. The actual rights could be related to just three parcels. A big mistake was filing a deed in the Klugus Water Facility on Olson Road next to the sheriff's station. The processing facility provides the water to Simi Valley Moore Park and Thousand Oaks. Big mistake. Water rights in Rancho Simi were small and fractionalized when Ms. Alford died. Simi Valley has 595 wells because the Simi Land and Water Company advertised buying land with their own artesian well. This deed from the BGCH attorney creates a cloud on people's title on the lawful activities of our city and water districts. This needs to be cleaned up. The city of Simi Valley and the police department do not enforce real estate law, so each property owner is on their own to deal with this. Any unrefuted claims to royalties would be passed on by the city to their customers. So, the unfortunate next step that I was trying to avoid is to pursue a class action suit against the BGCH attorney's liability insurance for apparently helping their client commit deed fraud. I hope all of you enjoy your evening. Thank you and good night.
Good evening. I'm Tiaja Jones from Simi Valley, and this is my son Ethan. We're just here also about the Safety Around Water program through the Y. We were lucky enough to get an email that had it on there, so we applied, and it's been wonderful for my son and our family. We had tried some other programs, and this one was just very successful for him, and he's so more confident now swimming, and I'm more confident letting him go to playdates and such in case there is a pool, that he can safely find his way out if needed. And he feels more confident and comfortable, and he really enjoys going. He looks forward to it, and we just wanted to thank you guys for the grant and allowing us to be a part of it. Do you want to say anything? Thank you.
Good evening, city council. My name is Kimberly Rowland. I'm a Simi Valley resident. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. I'm here to discuss an issue related to the placement of an ADU within our city, which my parents are in the process of adding to their property here in Simi. During the permitting process, we've encountered an obstacle that seems to be unique to our city, and I wanted to address it with you directly in hopes of finding a workable solution. As you know, the state of California has made it a priority to encourage the addition of ADUs to address housing needs. However, during our journey with permitting process, we discovered that the city of Simi Valley does not currently issue a separate address for ADUs. With respectfully asking, we are respectfully asking that this practice be reconsidered for several important reasons. One, safety in emergency situations, every second counts. Without a separate address, emergency personnel could face challenges locating the precise site of an emergency within the property. We believe that assigning a distinct address could be crucial in enhancing response times and safety. Two, mail delivery. Many homeowners are adding ADUs with rental purposes in mind. A separate address would allow for individual mail delivery, avoiding any potential confusion or privacy issues with mail. Three, Southern California Edison Services. SCE requires a separate address to establish separate meters and services. This presents two issues. First, SCE offers a connection allowance of around $5,000, one a separate address, separate meter, and separate billing, funds that we're unable to access under the current policy. Second, with a separate address, homeowners face substantial costs for upgrading the main panel to meet ADU needs. In our case, this upgrade could amount to approximately $10,000, which could be avoided with the SCE's support if a separate address was issued. We understand that Simi Valley policy is because we are not subdividing the property. However, many other cities in Ventura County have adopted alternative practices issuing separate addresses without requiring subdivision. These include options such as adding a half to the main address, like Camarillo does, using an AB designation like Thousand Oaks does, and in some cases issuing a full distinct address number like Ventura City does. Any of these solutions would satisfy the reasons we're requesting a separate address for our ADU and align Simi Valley with neighboring communities and accommodating this housing initiative. Thank you, and we appreciate your attention and consideration in this matter.
Good evening, mayor and city council members. My name's Lisa Roberts, and I'm a resident of Simi Valley. My name is also, our parcel is also included in the quitclaim deed through Boys and Girls Club of Hollywood. And I believe as the public statement that was generated on the Simi Valley government page, it stated that these parcels were obtained legally through the last will and testament of Bertha Alford. However, I've not come across any other resident that received any type of notification verbally or written prior to the 2019 quitclaim deed being attached to our parcels. This quitclaim deed is attached to our entire parcel. It does not in any way define that it is just easements or just a portion of the parcel. It literally is attached to the entire parcel. So, if in fact this is all legitimate and it was all done properly, I don't see why, what would prevent the Boys and Girls Club of Hollywood or their legal team coming out and calling a town hall-type meeting with the some 19,000 residents that are involved in this, explaining to us exactly what was done, what's theirs, what's ours, and attaching that in writing to this quitclaim deed so that going forward 10, 20, 30 years from now, when we're gone and you're gone, if we're leaving property to our families, there's no question, they can look at this and they can see clearly what this quitclaim deed defines on our parcels and what is ours. So, I would appreciate anything you might have to say about that. Thank you.
John Lapper, Simi Valley. Mayor Thomas and city council. I'd like to acknowledge three key parts of Simi Valley that we should all be proud of: Simi Valley Police Department, Rancho Simi Recreation and Parks, and Simi Valley Unified School District Schools. All three are nonpartisan, and as a parent of Simi Valley grads and longtime resident of Simi Valley, I am very proud of all three departments. They are all successful because of their independence and ability to provide awesome services to the community without politics getting in their way. All three have benefited from nonpartisan leadership, two of which elect their board trustees. For the first time in my memory, I have seen our entire Simi Valley city council play partisan Republican Party politics with our nonpartisan Simi Valley Unified School District Board races this year. All five have endorsed as a Republican bloc Dr. Ron Resnick, Sarah Osorio, and Dorina Timble. While that is certainly their choice to do so, I find it troubling when they put the Republican political agenda ahead of the best interests of our local Simi public school students. Since I only have three minutes, I'll focus on Dr. Ron Resnick, who supports Move the Needle, among other organizations that are not supportive of public schools. One choice principle of Move the Needle states, "Our job is to fight for school choice vouchers, increase homeschooling programs, and charter schools, and start dismantling the corrupt teachers' union." teachers' union." Another belief is social indoctrination at the K through 12 levels is being used to brainwash our children into false narratives that promote hatred to our country and each other, and lastly, take back our schools. To quote VP Vice President Kamala Harris, "Good leadership is about who you lift up, not who you beat down." All five City Council members here tonight have been presented Dr. Ron Resnick's conspiracy theory letter and information on Move the Needle. Dr. Ron's agenda is most certainly an organized effort to beat down our Simi Valley schools. How should Simi Valley Unified School District administrators, board members, teachers, PTA, parents, staff, and students feel after the election, knowing you all supported Dr. Ron, even after knowing of his agenda, which is certainly most detrimental to our fine Simi Public Schools and employees? Incumbent Dr. Sophia Bagdassarian and her achievement certainly deserve your vote in this race. I sincerely hope after tomorrow's election, our City Council will seek harmony in our city by representing all of its residents and their best interests, not those based solely on partisanship politics. May the best man or best woman win tomorrow. Thank you.[680.32][680.32](APPLAUSE).
Gary Mall.
My name is Gary Mallie, and I'm a Simi Valley resident, and my topic today is, I hope it benefits what I'm gonna say about the car registrations. Basically, for the cars that are 20 years old and still the same price as a 2011 Mercedes-Benz, which is, I'm right next to there. And I've tried to seek with the DMV, I just hit block walls every time. And so I come to you, and what would be the next step to try to lower those tags a decent amount, because there's a lot of people with 21-year-old cars. I got a Chevy Tahoe, and I feel that $204 for not just me, for the, for the people, and that's it. That's it? Okay, thanks.[767.01][767.01](APPLAUSE).
Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Next on the agenda is Item 4A, City Council Comments Regarding Public Statements.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to all of you that responded and had items to, to bring to our attention. I'd love to just make some quick comments. Thank you to the YMCA for the wonderful programs that you're doing. So delighted that we were able to find the funds to support your life-saving water safety program, and so I thank my fellow council members for all supporting that effort and all that you're doing. Appreciated your Halloween party where you had 3,500 kids on your grass just a couple weeks ago. So you're doing great things for our community, and appreciate those, your comments. Thank you for sharing and coming. Mr. Porter, I understand your concern. I appreciate the diligence and your tenacity in researching all avenues. You mentioned maybe the next step is a class action lawsuit. I do think it's disturbing that they haven't been able to come forward and explain, as Lisa commented, as far as what, what's, what's encumbered, what isn't, et cetera. So wish you the best with that. I'm sure we, we certainly would like our citizens to feel secure with their property. I don't know that we have the legal answer, but, but wish you well with that endeavor and keep us posted, please. Keep coming and talking to us and so we can, where we can help. Wanted to simply quickly comment on Ms. Kimberly Rowland's comments about the ADU that you're building on your parents', there you are, on your parents' property. I will tell you that heretofore, I have supported all the reasons why we have not added an additional address, just because of the confusion, because of the issue of separating, of separating the property, although you make a very compelling case and a way to change it. I will tell you that years ago, I owned a property with a unit behind, and we shared the same mailbox, and that person was always rear and we were front, and that was just this, but, so it can work that way, but I will certainly have a conversation further, but maybe initial or something, but other than that, I appreciate your, your suggestions Mr. Lapper, always good to hear from you, however, you are in error. All five of us have not endorsed all three of the school board candidates. In fact, I will say specifically, I've stayed out of some of the candidacies, and I think that we try to be as nonpartisan as possible, but I appreciate that you have a good, strong political opinion, and I always appreciate your involvement, but I want to go on the record very clearly that, that each of us here are individuals, some of us endorse, some don't endorse, based on our personal beliefs and preferences, and, and everyone in this community has that same right, and, but, thank you, and I, I will take that, I will take that opportunity to say what a glorious country we have that we can all vote, and tomorrow is the day, the deadline, so if you haven't taken care of your ballot yet, make it happen by tomorrow. Is it eight o'clock or seven o'clock?
Eight.
Eight. I want to be sure that there's no misinformation, so eight o'clock. So anyway, that, and Mr. Gary, about the car registration. If I understand what you're saying, you were saying you felt that the, the fees are too high for 20-year-old vehicles? I wasn't sure, but I was quite understanding.
Yeah. I was, I was.
No. Okay, I will, I will, maybe we can chat a little bit later. Obviously, that's, obviously that is a state, state issue that we don't have purview over, but as a driver of with an old, of an old car, I feel your angst, so we, you and I can chat later. But anyway, appreciate, and maybe I can understand better, but I'm afraid that, again, it's a state issue, but certainly we can take a position, but thank you. Again, thank you, everyone, for being here and participating. Very much appreciate it.
Mayor Protem Rhodes.
I was just gonna say that what you ended with, since you covered all the stuff nicely, thank you, everyone that comes out. I know it's often difficult to get up and speak in front of someone, or in front of the council, and so thank you for coming and sharing your stories about water safety, and thank everyone who comes down to, to speak at these things. You know that we can't directly respond or start dealing with your issues up here, but you've now brought them to our attention, and, and we can be working on the back. If you want to, especially Gary, I would, I would email City Council person, whoever your district rep is, Councilperson, email them directly and try and articulate exactly what you think the city can be doing about this, and, and then we can maybe start a ball rolling, but, yeah. I don't know which district you're in, but start with that City Councilperson, and then let us try and see if there's something that we can do, because I'm with Councilwoman Litzker. I didn't fully get exactly where you, but if there's an issue that we can deal with, you know, ask it out and we'll see if we can do it. Okay? And yeah, again, thank you all, and don't forget to get out and vote.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
I can't really come up with anything new, so everything that they said, we're all pretty much in agreement with, but thank you all for coming. It is very nerve-wracking to get up and speak. I was so nervous speaking to a classroom full of high school students a couple of weeks ago, and it's like, oh my gosh, I forgot what it's like. So, but thank you all for coming out here, and for the Y, I'm so glad we were able to help fund that, and for the lives it touched. Having a pool in my backyard, I know how, how important it is that the littles have, have water safety, so thank you. Thank you all for coming, and, and don't forget to vote if you haven't already.
And directed to the Y, you know, we, one of the best things we get to do is provide financial assistance to the amazing groups in this city, but it's extra special when you guys show up and, and show your appreciation for it. So that's really fantastic. Thank you. I'm not gonna say vote. Okay, vote.[1157.33][1157.33](LAUGHTER).
Councilmember Judge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to thank everybody for coming out and giving us your opinions and telling us your ideas. To the person who was talking about the DMV, I would, I would recommend that you also talk to your state assembly person, Jackie Irwin, and your state Senator, Howard Stern. Those two are directly involved with the state's processes, and that's where your ire with the DMV should be placed. If we can find a way to help you with that, that'd be great, but I don't think they, they don't ask us for opinions about state issues. But those are the two people that can directly get your message to the people that need to get it. Other than that, make sure you get out and vote. Thank you all for coming out.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, the next item on the agenda is Item 7, The Consent Calendar, and there are no resolutions for your consideration this evening.
Sorry, Mayor. I would love to just have a discussion, pull Item 2, if we could. I believe that is the one with, about the 911 system.
Okay. Can I get a motion on the balance?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to approve consent items 1 and 3.
Second.
Call for a vote.
The motion passes unanimously.
And if I might speak to my question. There is, there is no question in my mind that it's a worthwhile grant, we want to use it, et cetera. My question actually has to do with timing. I know recently we approved funds for something similar, and so my question is whether this is already in place and this is helping this current system. Basically, this grant is $67,000 to allow for real-time conversation, if I understand it correctly. Do we currently have that in place? I know there was a recent, we approved grant funds previously. Do we already have it in place? Does this supplement it? Is this something new? When, if it, if we don't have it, have it in place, when will it be?
So the community projects grant funding that we received from Congresswoman Brownlee supplements this, but I'm actually gonna call up Erin Cooper, who oversees our dispatch center, and she'll be able to speak to the timeliness of the implementation.
We, we just wanted to hear from you. I just want you to know that.
We do not currently have something like this in place, so this will be new for us.
So this supplements what we did previously? This just adds to that?
Funding.
Funding-wise, correct. What is the timeline when we receive all this, this money to actually have it go live real-time?
Um, that's a really good question. Once we receive the funds officially, then it's on me to then contact the vendor to set up the onboarding process, and however long that takes, it should be about a month to two months' process.
And these two grants together provide all the necessary funding that it works?
For, I believe it's three years.
For three years?
Yes.
That's the magic button. Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that information.
Thank you.
Any other questions? You guys are good?
We certainly want to take the money. I think, I suspect it's gonna be unanimous vote. It was just an opportunity to, to find out more information. I'm happy to move the passage of Item 2.
Second. Call for a vote.
The motion passes unanimously. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next on the agenda is Item 10A, City Council Member Reports.
Councilmember Litzker.
I want the council, the, the people watching to know that Mayor Protem Rhodes has shared with me that he times my comments every time, and so he just pulled up his timer, and for that purpose, I'm planning on taking an hour. Just. That's why you, thank you, Mayor. So actually, I will, I will try to keep it within a reasonable time. Thank you, Mayor Protem Rhodes. Tuesday, October the 22nd, I attended the Arts Commission meeting with my counterpart, Mr. Rhodes, and it was actually a special commission meeting that was called to specifically work out the language for an RFP request to actually put together a arts, what would we call it, an arts, not arts program, but an arts strategic plan, thinking it would give the right vernacular for the entire community, which we don't have one heretofore, and so hopefully the RFP will be, was excellently formed, and hopefully we will get approval to go forward with that. Also gave blood on that day, Wednesday, October 23rd. Attended the Chamber of Commerce's legislative meeting, always very, very informative, and I wanted to welcome our new public information's offer, Heather Smagaisai. Am I getting close, Heather, in saying that? Who will, I understand, be a contributing member to that with regularity, and so appreciated her being there as well. On Thursday, October the 24th, I visited with a resident who had some property issues, and I also attended a VCOG administrative meeting where we planned our last meetings and, and put together, and approved basically a search packet. I will mention that VCOG, the Ventura Council of Governments, has a wonderful director, Hugh Riley, who is retiring at the end of this coming spring, and so I share that. If any of you have the background, interest, information, or know of those who would be a good director for that, please, now's the time to come forwards, but he will be sorely missed. He's done a wonderful job. October 25th, Friday, I attended the California Association of Student Council's Advocacy Conference, which was held at CLU, and basically, your student body officers from middle school and high school from all over the tri-county region, the area, came together and were given issues of, that were struggles for youth, and they had to come up with a plan, they had to fund it, and then they had to come and advocate to us why we should, why we should implement this plan. It was everything from changing school, and solutions involved everything from statewide changing school curriculum to holding a special assembly to deal with the issue. And so it was very informative, but what it really was, was tremendous opportunities to see our youth in action. So it was great to be a part of that, and I will just say that a handful of our own student council members were also in there, participating, so very well done. Also, on that evening, Friday, October 25th, I got to be a judge for the, for the Halloween Costume Contest at Vista Elementary. And I will say that is one of the hardest jobs I've had recently. Out, lots of amazing, amazing children in great costumes, and I don't wish that task on anybody, but it was very fun to be part of it. On Saturday, October 26th, like many of you here up on Stias, I attended the Chamber of Commerce Fall Street Fair and City Expo. I want to thank the city for all of their efforts, the displays that they put together, very informative, very instructive, and I think it was just everything from our, from our Council on Aging and Senior Center to our police officers, to our, 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 well, our road, any, everything that the city does, from water to you name it, was there, and it was just outstanding, so thank you. All that was missing was the council member booth, but we'll see what we can do for the next one. No. No. Anyway, it was, it was actually, actually, it was very informative, so thank you to all. I know that my husband was there at 4:30 in the morning, or 5:00 in the morning to help set up, set up the tents, et cetera, and many were there long before him. It's a huge undertaking to make that happen, so thank you to all. This will go faster, Rocky. I was gone the whole next week, traveling to Idaho where I was visiting my mother, who was in poor health. I did return Friday, too late to attend the ribbon cutting, I'm afraid, but did participate with Simi Valley Orchestra, and I will say that this community orchestra will be performing at the Veterans Day Gathering on November 11th, and I encourage people to attend that at Veterans Park. It will be a beautiful thing, 11:00 in the morning. On Saturday, November 2nd, I represented the city attending the New West Symphony, Symphony at the Thousand Oaks Cavalry Center. What a marvelous performance that was, and I will say that I was able to speak with some of the founders there, et cetera, in the meeting beforehand, and they expressed their desire to have Simi Valley an active part of what they're doing there, so I just want to share that. I think we are all invited to, to come to those performances and events. It was, it was just very well done. And I will say what was particularly appreciated, okay, I'm gonna get a little nerdy musically, but they played Dvorak's New World Symphony, but it was, to that symphony, they put up pictures of our entire, of the country that had been taken by drone, and all I can say is we live in a beautiful country. We are so blessed. So I just, just need to put that out there. This morning, it was very good to attend the swearing-in center, swearing-in ceremony for our senior police officers, Michael Whitelaw and Evan Schall. Congratulations to both of them, and congratulations to their sweet wives and young children who were there at 8:00 in the morning. I thought that was a tremendous sacrifice on their parts, but it was great to be there. And then we had a, an ad hoc meeting, myself with Mayor Protem Rhodes, to discuss the amphitheater and- I thought that was a tremendous sacrifice on their parts, but it was great to be there. And then we had an ad hoc meeting, myself with Mayor Protem Rhodes, to discuss the amphitheater and how to go forward with that ad hoc meeting and ad hoc committee. And I appreciate the guidance that we received from Attorney Al Ford about the proper structuring of the questions that we're asking and research that we're doing. And that concludes my report. And again, if you haven't voted, tomorrow's it. And what is my time? Don't tell me. Never mind, I don't want to know. Thank you.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mine will not be as long, I promise. On September, or excuse me, on September, on Saturday, October 26th, I along with probably everybody in town attended the Simi Valley Street Fair. Again, the chamber put on a wonderful event. The kids love all the candy and the adults love all the freebies and just getting to see everybody. I have this one girl, lady, I run into her once a year at the street fair every year. And so that's our annual get-together. Hi, how are you? How's the family? So that's Simi Valley and everyone loves it. Prior to that, that same morning, October 26th, I had the honor of attending the memorial for Bob Spielman, who was a longtime Simi Valley teacher, coach. The gymnasium at Royal is named after him. He started at Simi and then traded to Royal. He went to the right side. But Bob was just a super, super great guy, very well-loved by others. His wife, Mary, is still with us, as well as his three sons. It was a wonderful, wonderful mass. Father Shay did a great job. Found out a lot of things about Bob. He was served in the military and you know what he did in the military? Played football. That's what they had him do the entire time he was in the military. He was a big guy. But I'm sorry to see him go, but he lived a very, very, very well, well and good life. On Saturday, November 2nd, I had the pleasure of attending an event at our Simi Valley Cultural Arts Center. I have a bunch of high school girlfriends that we get together every month or two just to do something. So we went to see Beehive at the Cultural Arts Center. It was wonderful. If you like music, you need to go. These six ladies are up there performing all the top songs from the 60s and they do an amazing job. They've only practiced six weeks prior to starting this. And this will be the end on November 10th. So for the $28 it costs for a ticket, it was absolutely fantastic. There were, I think we had 14 people in our group. And on the stage, they heard us cheering the loudest. They go, that group in the back, you guys are really into it. So it really, really was enjoyable. I encourage anyone and everyone to go out and try and get to see it before it leaves. It's not going anywhere else. That will be the final performance. But it was fantastic. For those of you that don't know, last year I tried to get tickets to the MetroLink Holiday Express train and they were sold out. They went on sale today. I woke up at 1:00 AM this morning to buy mine. I wanted to make sure I was going to get them. But it's in Simi Valley, it's December 14th. Go onto the MetroLink website. There are two trains that day, which I think is going to help out. So there's one in the morning and one in the early afternoon. It's a magical event for the kids and just a really good time and a great way to get to try out MetroLink. So you don't have to get up at 1:00 AM, there are still tickets available. And then somebody did mention, unfortunately, I will be traveling, but I think this will be the first Veterans Day I've missed in probably 20 years at Rancho Taplo Park, Lemon Park. So just get out there. The celebrant this year are Vietnam veterans. So it's easy to remember, it's 11:00, 11:00 at 11:00. So hope to see everybody, well, I won't be there, but I hope a lot of people come out and honor our veterans. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Judge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Saturday, October 26th, I attended the Simi Valley Chamber of Commerce Street Fair. I want to thank the Chamber of Commerce for putting on another great event. That's the end of my report.
Well done. Mayor Protem Rhodes.
Well, not as long as Elaine's, not as short as Mike's. Let's see. Tuesday, October 22nd, I had Arts Commission meeting, already explained by Councilwoman Litzker. And I'm looking forward to getting an RFP out about a arts plan. Wednesday, October 23rd, I also attended the Chamber Legislative Advocacy Forum online. I also that day had an interesting get-together with a local business called Pickle La Tiny Homes down on Easy Street. And they build tiny homes that are actually built on the frames of trailers. And so they can be licensed as RVs as well, but they might be an interesting alternative for ADUs to get them on. So they're doing a great job down there. On Thursday, I left for North Carolina. And to brag just a moment, I got to attend my son's graduation from NASCAR mechanic school, which is maybe the coolest thing ever. And when we arrived, the first thing he did is said, you know, hey, we could go out to dinner or we could go to the drag strip because it's Thursday. And it's like, all right, and that's what you do in Mooresville, North Carolina. Weekend, Tuesday, October 29th, I had an ad hoc Zoom call with Councilwoman Litzker about the amphitheater project. On Wednesday, October 30th, I went to the Free Clinic, Simi Valley's ribbon-cutting event. They have new solar panels and hopefully some batteries to be installed that we, as the city, can help move some things forward for them. Later that day in the afternoon, I had a Zoom call with three organizations, all trying to assess the likelihood of doing something in the city. It was Dignity Moves, which is a transitional housing group, Gensler, their construction contractor, and the Samaritan Center, seeking advice on whether Simi Valley would be open to transitional housing being built here. On Friday, November 1st, I went up to the mall to attend the Holiday Experience Grand Opening in the Macy's East Building. There's an event up there, so take the kids and bring your camera because there's tons of places where you can take pictures and experience the wonders of Christmas and the holidays. They have a Hanukkah exhibit as well. And take some pictures, have fun at the mall. It's a great way to drive people to the mall, but it's also just fun with family. The Saturday, while it's not business-related for the city, my Rotary Club is sponsoring an international exchange student. And for a few days, the exchange student's moving in with us before going and staying with Councilwoman Kavanaugh for a few months. And then will be coming back to us for a few months. And she is just wonderful and our world is in great shape when kids are this smart. Today, I went to the swearing-in ceremony for our senior officers and I participated in the ad hoc committee meeting. And Councilwoman Litzker, for the record, you took a week off and you still went a minute and 10 minutes over last week. So that's what I'm saying.
Because I had to explain all the things that you didn't.
That's right.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Saturday, October 26th, attended the street fair. I will say it's an amazing event that just keeps growing and growing. I know they were sold out this year and it's great to see everybody out and doing a community event like that. October 30th, attended the Free Clinic ribbon-cutting. Gosh, can't say enough about what the Free Clinic does. And in this particular case, it had to do with a partnership with, and I can't remember the name. Yeah. No, it's, no, it's the, they do stuff worldwide. But they have been providing drugs for the Free Clinic historically. And in this particular case, they provided solar panels to make them be able to continue to operate in the event of a power outage or an emergency. So it's really fantastic. And it was great, I got to present certificates to Fred from the Free Clinic and Thomas from the other organization. Fred, Thomas, get it? Friday, November 1st, attended the Holiday Experience up at the Macy's East. Couple notes that they were advertising. First of all, a lot of the displays in there are actually from famous movies. And it's lit up with 1 million Christmas lights. So it's kind of a cool thing and lots of photo opportunities. So if you've got kids, you definitely need to go see it. It's here through Christmas. And then, gosh. Is that it? I guess I'm done. Okay. Any future agenda items?
Mr. Mayor, I do have one future agenda item I would like to have us discuss, preparing an ad hoc committee to continue discussions about temporary supportive housing with the Samaritan Center.
I'll second.
Okay, I was going to say I'll second.
Stop, bring something back.
All right. And I'd like to be involved, actually. All right. Well, in that case then, I'm going to adjourn this meeting in memory of Paula Meyer Sheil, Glenn Bessera's mother-in-law. Thank you, everybody. Have a good evening.